You don ' t belong on this stage. Step off. Now. With those six words, a racist principal shattered a young black girl ' s dream in front of a packed auditorium. But when she played her piano in secret, and the right people walked in, everything changed. What began as a moment of humiliation turned into a national movement. This is the breathtaking journey of a girl who turned silence into music and made history with a single song. Now, before we dive deeper, please like and subscribe to our channel. We share powerful, meaningful stories like this every day. And drop a comment below to let us know what time and where you ' re watching from. Thank you so much, and now, let ' s get back to the story. Now, before we dive deeper, please like and subscribe to our channel. We share powerful, meaningful stories like this every day. And drop a comment below to let us know what time and where you ' re watching from. Thank you so much, and now, let ' s get back to the story. You don ' t belong up there. Step off. Now. The words struck her harder than a slap. They were whispered, but sharp enough to silence her spirit. Amara blinked under the glare of the stage lights, her fingers hovering above the ivory keys, trembling, not from stage fright, but from something far colder. From disbelief, from shame. Behind her, the entire auditorium buzzed in the hush that follows excitement. Families leaning forward, phones ready, waiting for the music to begin. But the silence that now wrapped the room was different. It was the kind that lives in the seconds before something beautiful is destroyed. Principal Crawford was at her side. Tall, stiff, face ironed with disdain. He leaned just close enough to invade her courage. You ' ll embarrass this school, he muttered, lips barely moving. Get off the stage now. She didn ' t move, her pulse pounded in her ears. She looked out, into the sea of faces, into the hopeful eyes of her little sister in the front row, into the stillness of people who didn ' t yet know the performance was already over before it began. He reached down, placed a firm hand on her shoulder. Now, he whispered again, colder than the January wind outside. Amara stood, the wooden bench scraped softly against the stage floor. Every movement felt like treason, against herself, against the music she ' d poured her soul into. She stepped down. Her dress, a simple, secondhand white one her mother had altered at home, brushed her knees like a final curtain. She didn ' t cry, not yet. She just walked, steady as she could, off the stage and into the shadows. Backstage smelled of sawdust and forgotten costumes. Miss Kim, her music teacher, rushed toward her, eyes wide. What happened? Amara shook her head once, hard. He said I ' d embarrass the school, she whispered. Her voice sounded foreign to her own ears, hollow, detached. Miss Kim ' s mouth parted, as if trying to catch a breath that had been stolen from both of them. You were ready, Amara. You ' ve played that piece beautifully in every rehearsal. It doesn ' t matter, Amara murmured, trying to keep the sting from her eyes. I ' m not the right kind of student. She didn ' t need to explain. Miss Kim had been at Lincoln High for fifteen years. She ' d seen it, year after year, how the same handful of students always seemed to be favored. How talent was overlooked if it came dressed in a skin color that didn ' t match Crawford ' s expectations. She reached for Amara ' s hand, squeezed it gently. I ' m so sorry, but apologies don ' t make silence sing. And Amara had spent most of her life learning to stay quiet when things hurt. She gave a tight nod, pulled her hand away gently, and turned toward the back exit. Her heart was too full, and yet felt impossibly empty. Outside, the air hit her like ice, her breath came out in cloudy puffs. Snow had begun falling again, soft flakes settling on the school ' s bare branches. The streetlights cast long shadows. She sat down on a cold bench near the side entrance and stared up at the sky, blinking back everything she didn ' t want to feel. She could still feel the keys beneath her fingertips, the music trying to rise from within her. It had no stage now, no spotlight, just her, and the night, and a piano bench that would stay empty. She didn ' t notice Miss Kim following her out. The teacher stood back for a while, then slowly approached. Amara, she said softly, you wrote that piece for tonight. Let it be heard, even if it ' s not on that stage. Amara looked down. What good is a song no one hears? Miss Kim stepped closer, knelt slightly so their eyes met. You don ' t play for them, not really. You never did. You play because it ' s how your soul speaks. Amara let those words sink in. Miss Kim pressed a small silver key into her palm. Come with me. Ten minutes later, they were in the dim hallway outside the old gymnasium, where the school kept overflow chairs and props. And one thing more, a weathered, upright piano. Dusty. Forgotten, but real. The kind of instrument with chipped wood and stories in its strings. This is where I practiced when I was a student here, Miss Kim said with a wistful smile. No lights, no pressure, just me and the music. Amara walked slowly toward the piano. She sat, the bench creaked beneath her. She wiped her fingers across the keys. Dust smudged her skin like ashes. She pressed a note. It rang out, raw and haunting. She closed her eyes and then she played. It started soft, almost like a memory unraveling. Each note a word she hadn ' t been allowed to say. The melody rose like a question. Why can ' t I belong? Why can ' t I be seen? Her piece, unmuted, had taken weeks to write. It told a story without needing lyrics, about being invisible, about fighting to matter, about the quiet rage of knowing you ' re enough and still being told you ' re not. The music filled the hallway, echoed through the vents, and somewhere down the corridor, a door opened, then another. By the second refrain, two parents had stopped nearby, phones in hand, curiosity in their eyes. A student walking past froze, turned, listened. Amara didn ' t notice. She was somewhere else now, where no one could pull her off stage. The notes carried her like wings. The room fell away. By the time the final chord faded into the still air, a small group had gathered. Silent. Moved. A woman clapped slowly. A man wiped at his eyes. Amara looked up, startled to find she ' d drawn a crowd. One of the students filming whispered she wasn ' t even allowed to perform tonight. Another murmured, this should have been the main event. And without meaning to, Amara smiled for the first time that evening. Miss Kim stepped forward, placed a hand on her shoulder, not to remove her, but to anchor her. You played, Amara, and they heard you. The videos hit local feeds within the hour. The caption was simple. The girl who wasn ' t allowed to perform, but played anyway. The numbers ticked upward. Hundreds. Thousands. But Amara wasn ' t watching. She was home now, curled on the couch beside her little sister, who kept humming the melody softly as they sat under an old quilt. Her mother stood in the kitchen, still in her nurse scrubs, eyes glassy with pride. That was your heart in those keys, she whispered. You made people feel something, baby. That ' s more than any ribbon or stage. And though the wound still ached, something in Amara began to mend. The morning light crept through the curtains, soft and golden, painting warmth across Amara ' s face. But even as the sun promised a new day, her body felt heavy, as if the weight of yesterday clung to her ribs. Downstairs, the aroma of maple syrup drifted from the kitchen, accompanied by the clatter of plates and the rhythmic creak of the old floorboards. Her mother was already up, she always was, and her sister Lila was humming again. That same tune Amara had played in the hallway last night. Somehow it sounded different coming from a child ' s lips, almost like hope dressed in a lullaby. But Amara didn ' t move. She lay still in bed, her hands resting atop the covers like they were unsure of their purpose. What did it mean that she had played? What did it matter now that it was over? A knock on her door broke the silence. Come in, she called softly. Lila peeked her head in, her curls bouncing, her face beaming like it had no idea what sadness was. Miss Kim ' s at the door. Amara blinked. Now? Leela nodded. She said it ' s important. Still in her sweatshirt and pajama pants, Amara padded down the stairs. The living room smelled like cinnamon toast, and Miss Kim stood at the doorway holding two large mugs of cocoa, her breath clouding in the morning chill. I figured you ' d need this, she said, offering one to Amara. Amara smiled weakly and took it, the warmth already seeping into her fingers. Thanks. Miss Kim didn ' t waste time. I don ' t know if you ' ve seen what ' s happening online. Amara frowned. No, I, I haven ' t really been on my phone. Then you ' re probably the last person in town who doesn ' t know. She pulled out her phone, tapped, and turned the screen. There it was. Amara. At the piano. In the hallway. Lost in her music. Only this time, the video had been viewed over a hundred thousand times, shared across community groups, reposted on local news pages. Comments overflowed beneath the post. This is what talent looks like. She wasn ' t on stage? That ' s a crime. My daughter goes to Lincoln. I ' m emailing the board tonight. We see you, young lady. You are the light in that building. Amara felt the tears sting before she could stop them. She pressed the mug against her lips to hide the tremble, but it was no use. The tears came anyway. I didn ' t think anyone would care, she whispered. They care, Miss Kim said gently. More than you know. She sat beside Amara on the edge of the couch, her eyes kind but intense. But it ' s not just praise, Amara, it ' s power. People are asking questions. Parents, board members, even alumni. They want to know why the most gifted pianist in the school was pulled off stage. Amara looked down. I don ' t want to get anyone in trouble. Miss Kim shook her head. This isn ' t about trouble. It ' s about truth, and protecting the next girl who wants to sit at that piano without being judged for her skin or her silence. They sat like that for a while, two souls bound by music and memory, sipping cocoa while the world outside stirred. Later that afternoon, Amara ' s mother returned home with flushed cheeks and wild eyes. You are not going to believe what happened, she said breathlessly, setting her purse down. What? I ran into Misses Denham at the grocery store. Her son ' s in the gifted program too. She told me the school board has called a special meeting, unscheduled, closed door, and it ' s about the showcase. Amara blinked. Because of me? Her mother nodded, then knelt in front of her, her voice trembling with pride. People finally saw what I ' ve known since the day you first tapped out a tune on your cereal bowl. You don ' t need permission to be great, but maybe now they ' ll stop trying to deny you the space to shine. For the next two days, Amara ' s world tilted. Phone calls came in, from strangers, reporters, musicians offering scholarships, local artists wanting to collaborate. Her school email inbox overflowed with messages of support. Even her classmates, some of whom barely acknowledged her before, began whispering words of encouragement in the hallways. But amid the warmth, there was still a cold shadow. Mister Crawford. He walked the halls like nothing had happened. Tall, dismissive, unapologetic. At lunch, he passed Amara without a glance. During announcements, he made no mention of the second showcase the school was hurriedly planning. No acknowledgement of what had unfolded. His silence wasn ' t ignorance, it was control. He was waiting for the storm to pass, hoping the noise would die down like it always had. But this time, it didn ' t. Miss Kim stopped Amara after class on Wednesday and handed her a printed letter. They want you to play. Amara frowned. What? The board. They ' re attending the second showcase on Friday. They requested specifically that you perform the piece you played in the hallway. Amara ' s breath caught. But, on stage, on the stage, Miss Kim said, spotlight and all. A strange cocktail of emotions stirred inside her. Fear, excitement, disbelief. The same bench that had been ripped away from her would now be waiting, again. But this time, not in shame. This time, with eyes that had learned how to see her. She spent the next two evenings practicing alone in the bandroom, long after the other students had gone home. The keys were no longer stiff with dust. They welcomed her. Each note felt like healing, slow and aching, but sure. Miss Kim sat nearby, offering quiet guidance, sometimes just presence. You know, she said once, during a soft pause, when I was your age, I entered a state music competition. I was the only black girl in the room, and when I won, the announcer said my name like it was a mistake. Amara looked up. I swore then that I would never let another young girl feel like her voice didn ' t belong on a stage. Amara ' s lips quivered with a smile. You didn ' t let me. Miss Kim ' s eyes shimmered. You made sure no one else will either. Friday arrived like a thunderstorm wrapped in sunshine, electric and unpredictable. The auditorium buzzed again, but the mood was different. Less glossy, more expectant. There were murmurs in the crowd, glances at unfamiliar faces seated in the second row. The entire school board. Amara stood backstage, her fingers laced together tightly. Her white dress fit a little better this time. Her mother had sewn a line of silver beads along the hem. She wore her hair in a simple bun, and around her wrist was a bracelet Lila had made from paper stars. Miss Kim appeared beside her. Breathe. I ' m scared. That means you ' re alive, Miss Kim whispered, brushing a stray curl from her cheek. Now go make the room feel what it means to be free. When her name was called, there was a strange silence, a tension. People weren ' t sure what to expect, and then she stepped out. This time, no one stopped her. No one whispered in her ear. She sat at the piano and looked out, not just at the audience, but beyond them, into the heart of every person who had ever been told they weren ' t enough. And then, she began to play. The first note hung in the air like a question that dared not be spoken. It was soft, fragile, a breath barely formed, but it reached every corner of the room, cutting through whispers, rustling programs, and the unspoken doubt that still hovered among those who had not yet made up their minds. Amara ' s fingers rested on the keys as if she were touching something sacred, her back straight, her heart trembling somewhere between courage and grief. Then came the second note, stronger, and the third, bolder. Her melody unfolded like a letter sealed years ago finally opened. It was not a performance, it was a confession, a truth too long buried beneath the silence of dismissed brilliance, a voice too long ignored. She wasn ' t just playing unmuted, she was living it. The piece swelled, no longer soft but defiant, no longer hesitant but full of motion. Her fingers danced with purpose, racing across octaves as if she were chasing the echoes of every time someone told her no, every skipped invitation, every lost award, every crooked smile that said, you ' re not who we pictured. The auditorium sat in stunned stillness. Even Principal Crawford, sitting stiffly in the second row, found himself frozen. For the first time in his polished, pristine career, the power of his silence met a louder truth, one he could neither interrupt nor deny. The board members leaned in. Some took notes. One, a woman with graying hair and rimless glasses, blinked rapidly behind her clipboard, her knuckles whitening as she gripped her pen. Another had his phone tilted upward, not to record in vanity, but as if he were afraid this moment might vanish if he didn ' t preserve it. Amara did not look at them. Not once. Her eyes remained closed through the final chorus, the part of the composition where she allowed her pain to ache across the keys, where the melody dipped into a minor key, somber and aching. Where the rhythm slowed into something like mourning, but refused to end in despair. Instead, the final passage lifted gently, note by note, back into a rising sequence that left the room breathless. It ended the way she always imagined it would, not with thunder, but with stillness, a note that lingered in the air long after her fingers left the keys. For a second, no one moved. Then without prompting, someone in the back stood. Clapped once, twice, the sound echoed, then another person, then another, and then the room erupted. It wasn ' t just applause. It was a release, an uproar of hands and cheers and shouted bravos that had nothing to do with her age or her title and everything to do with the truth they ' d just witnessed. The kind of applause reserved not for performance, but for vindication. Amara stood slowly, her breath catching. Her hands still tingled. She blinked out into the lights, not as a child seeking permission, but as a young woman claiming space. Miss Kim appeared at the edge of the curtain, her eyes glassy with tears, nodding with pride that didn ' t need words. Amara bowed gently, then turned and walked off stage, not hurried, not hiding. This time, no one pulled her away. In the hallway outside the auditorium, voices buzzed like honeybees. She wrote that herself? Did you see the board? I ' ve never heard anything like it. A reporter from the local paper tried to follow her. Miss Kim gently stepped in. Give her a moment, she said. Amara found the quiet in the janitor ' s closet beside the practice room. It was dark, small, and smelled faintly of floor polish and forgotten sheet music. But in that moment, it felt like the safest place on earth. She sank to the floor, knees pulled to her chest, and for the first time since the showcase, she cried. Not from pain, but from something like peace, from the weight of silence finally lifted. Minutes passed, then a knock. She didn ' t answer. The door creaked open anyway, slowly. It was Miss Kim. She didn ' t speak, just stepped inside, sat beside Amara on the cold linoleum and waited. Finally, Amara whispered, I didn ' t know it would feel like that. Like what? Like flying. Kim smiled, brushing a lock of hair from Amara ' s face. That ' s because you finally played without chains. They sat in silence again, until a second knock came, this one louder, more official. The door opened, and the gray- haired board member stepped inside. Her badge still clung to her blazer, but her eyes had softened. She carried a small notebook in one hand, and a folded letter in the other. May I, she asked. Amara nodded slowly. I ' m Mary Whitaker, chair of the Lincoln School Board. She crouched to their level. I ' ve sat through twelve years of talent showcases. This was the first one where I felt something that changed me. Amara ' s eyes widened. Mary continued. I owe you an apology, not just on behalf of this school, but on behalf of everyone who ever overlooked someone like you. And I want you to know, we ' re not going to let this be a story of one night. We ' re going to make this right. She handed over the letter. Amara opened it slowly. It was a formal invitation to the upcoming district wide arts symposium, where she had been invited as the closing performer, Mary added. And tomorrow morning, there will be a vote, on several leadership concerns raised in response to last week ' s incident. You ' ll be hearing about it soon. Amara didn ' t need to ask what that meant. She knew. Crawford ' s reign was cracking. As Mary rose to leave, she paused by the door. You may not have realized it, Amara, but you ' ve started something. Don ' t let anyone dim it, especially not now. She was gone before Amara could speak. Later that evening back home, the house glowed with warmth. Lila ran circles around the living room, shouting my sister ' s famous, while their mother sat on the couch wiping her eyes. The printed invitation clutched in one hand like a passport to a future none of them had dared dream aloud. The phone rang, and rang again. There were messages from city officials, local music schools, a conservatory in North Carolina that had seen the video, and asked if Amara might consider applying early. But through it all, Amara sat by the old family piano in the corner of their tiny living room. Her hands touched the keys once more. This time, she didn ' t play for a crowd. She didn ' t play to prove anything. She just played for herself. And in that private moment, with the hum of the heater and Lila ' s soft singing in the background, she understood something more powerful than applause. She didn ' t need a stage to be heard. She only needed to never stop playing. The morning of the vote arrived quiet and gray, the kind of overcast sky that whispered change before it ever made a sound. The trees outside Lincoln High stood still, branches bare and watching, as if the old oaks themselves were bracing for what might come. Inside the school ' s administrative building, the conference room buzzed with a nervous kind of calm. The school board sat in polished chairs shuffling notes, sipping from travel mugs, and eyeing the empty seat at the head of the table, the seat that belonged to Principal Crawford. He was late. Outside that room, the hallways were unusually still. Students seemed to sense something invisible, yet seismic shifting beneath the surface. Teachers moved carefully, their glances darting toward the closed conference room doors, as if expecting to hear a verdict through the walls. In the music wing, Amara sat at the piano bench in the practice room, her hands resting silently in her lap. Her eyes weren ' t on the keys, they were fixed on her reflection in the black gloss above them. She didn ' t feel victorious, she felt. Raw. Like a wound had been exposed, not just in her, but in the school, the community, and maybe the country itself. And now everyone was staring at it, waiting to see who would clean it up. Miss Kim entered quietly, her coat was still buttoned, hair damp from the walk across the courtyard. She didn ' t speak at first, just stood beside Amara and let the silence settle between them like old dust. They ' re voting now, she finally said. Amara nodded slowly. Do you think it ' ll matter? I think it already has, Miss Kim replied. But I also think some people only act after the world starts watching. Amara looked down. I didn ' t want to become the center of something like this. Miss Kim knelt beside her. You didn ' t choose this storm, Amara, but you chose to stand still while it raged. And that, that is what changes people. Amara turned her gaze to the window. Outside, the clouds shifted, just enough for one shard of sunlight to break through. A single ray fell across the piano, catching the edge of her bracelet, the one with the paper stars Lila had made. It shimmered like something quietly divine. Moments later, the phone in Miss Kim ' s pocket buzzed. She read the message in silence, then slowly sat back against the piano bench. Well, Amara asked. Miss Kim ' s eyes were wet before she even spoke. Unanimous. Crawford ' s been placed on indefinite administrative leave, pending investigation. Amara didn ' t react right away. The news felt distant, like a bell tolling from a far off hill. It took time for the echo to reach her heart. But it ' s more than that, Miss Kim continued. They ' ve formed a new oversight committee for student talent inclusion, and they ' re naming the spring showcase after you. Amara blinked. What? It ' s called the Amara Initiative, for students whose voices have been overlooked, a permanent space, your name, your story, your courage. A sharp breath escaped her lips. She hadn ' t cried since the night of the second performance, but now her throat tightened again, in that way grief does when it finally transforms into something softer. I don ' t know what to say, she whispered. You already said everything. Miss Kim replied. With your music. That afternoon, the announcement spread through the school like wildfire. Students looked at Amara differently. Not with the shallow recognition of sudden fame, but with something deeper. Respect. A kind of reverence only born from witnessing someone survive what they weren ' t supposed to endure. In the cafeteria, people clapped when she walked in. In the hallways, even teachers she ' d never spoken to nodded or stopped to say, well done. But she didn ' t linger in those moments. They weren ' t why she played. That evening, as snow fell gently outside her bedroom window, Amara sat curled beneath a blanket with her little sister pressed against her side. Their mother was in the kitchen, humming an old Motown tune while stirring something on the stove. Lila tilted her head up. What does initiative mean? It means something new that starts because something old wasn ' t fair, Amara answered softly. Like a second chance? Amara smiled, exactly like that. Lila considered this, then snuggled closer. When I grow up, I want to be in your concert. Amara brushed a kiss against her forehead. You already are. Later that week, the local news station asked to interview Amara. She sat with Miss Kim and her mother beside her, nerves bubbling in her chest as the cameras rolled and the reporter smiled too brightly. How does it feel, the woman asked, to be the face of something so important? Amara looked at her, then at the camera. I don ' t think I ' m the face of anything, she said quietly. I ' m just someone who finally got tired of being quiet. There are so many others like me. We don ' t want to be symbols. We just want to be heard. The clip aired that night and was replayed for days. People across the city began sending letters, some handwritten, some typed. One came from an elderly black pianist who had once been denied entrance to a conservatory in the nineteen sixties. Another from a young girl in Texas who ' d never touched a piano, but now wanted to learn. They didn ' t all know her, but they saw themselves in her. In those days, Amara realized something. You don ' t have to be famous to matter. You don ' t have to be loud to be heard. Sometimes, the quietest songs reach the farthest hearts. And sometimes, the smallest girl becomes the spark that lights a thousand lamps. The following Monday, Miss Kim handed Amara a final envelope. It ' s from New York, she said, almost casually. Amara opened it slowly. Inside was a thick cream colored letter, embossed and formal. We are pleased to offer you a full scholarship to attend our Young Artists Summer Program at the Juilliard School. Amara stared at the words, her heart pounding so loudly she almost couldn ' t hear Miss Kim say, they saw the video, and they want you. I thought they only accepted students with connections, Amara said softly. Miss Kim smiled. Turns out talent is the best connection of all. Amara looked down at the letter, then at her hands, then at the piano sitting quietly in the corner. She placed her fingers on the keys and for the first time in days, she played something new. A melody not born of pain or protest, but of beginning, because even when the world tries to write your ending, music knows better. The final days of winter came softly, as if the season had grown tired of its own bitterness. Snow still clung to the edges of the school grounds, but it no longer threatened, just lingered, a memory slowly melting away. With the winds less cruel and the light returning inch by inch, something else began to thaw too. The atmosphere inside Lincoln High was different now. It wasn ' t just the absence of Principal Crawford, though that alone had shifted an invisible weight off everyone ' s shoulders. It was something more subtle, a new rhythm in the halls. Students speaking with bolder voices, teachers daring to see students they hadn ' t really seen before. But for Amara, it was still strange walking through a place where she ' d once felt invisible, and now felt impossibly visible. She had become the girl people pointed at in whispers, the one who took on the system, the one who got the principal removed. Even those who hadn ' t believed in her before suddenly spoke her name with reverence, as if they ' d always known what she was capable of. Some days it made her proud, other days, it made her want to hide. Is it wrong that I don ' t always want to be an example? She asked Miss Kim one afternoon as they sat at the back of the music room. Sometimes I just want to be a girl who plays piano. Miss Kim tilted her head gently. It ' s not wrong, it ' s human. Heroes don ' t ask to be symbols, they ' re just people who refused to stay silent. Amara nodded, though her heart still wrestled with the weight of her own name. She was preparing for the district arts symposium now, the one she ' d been invited to headline. It was the biggest stage she ' d ever performed on, larger even than the school ' s auditorium. And it wasn ' t just students this time. It was educators, donors, artists, musicians, journalists, all watching, all waiting. For weeks, she ' d tried to write something new, but every time she sat at the piano, her fingers froze. The music wouldn ' t come. For weeks, she ' d tried to write something new, but every time she sat at the piano, her fingers froze. The music wouldn ' t come, not the way it used to. I think I ' m scared it won ' t be enough this time, she admitted one evening at home. She sat cross legged on her bed, notebook open in her lap, blank. What if that moment at the showcase was it? What if that was my only spark? Her mother, folding laundry nearby, looked over with gentle eyes. Baby, sparks don ' t vanish, they catch fire. And when they do, you don ' t chase the same flame, you light new ones. It was a beautiful thought. Still, the fear lingered. The night before the symposium, Amara sat alone at the old family piano. The house was quiet. Lila asleep, her mother working a late shift. The window near the keys fogged gently with her breath as she leaned into the keys. Then something unexpected happened. Her fingers didn ' t play unmuted, they began to find something new. It wasn ' t polished, it wasn ' t grand, it was honest. It started with a single chord progression, delicate and slow, like sunrise creeping across a frozen lake. Then a whisper of melody followed, weaving in and out like someone learning to speak after years of being quiet. She didn ' t name it. She didn ' t try to finish it, she just let it become. And when she finally lifted her hands, the clock had crept well past midnight. Her fingers were trembling, but her soul felt still. The next day arrived like a promise. The Lincoln Civic Center bustled with cars and people bundled in coats, scarves, and anticipation. Inside, a grand stage gleamed beneath amber lights. A glossy black Steinway stood in the center, waiting. Backstage, Amara stood in her simple navy dress, hands folded tightly in front of her. Her mother kissed her forehead. You were born for this, she said softly. Not because they expect something, but because you have something worth giving. Miss Kim squeezed her shoulder, then stepped back. The announcer ' s voice echoed through the auditorium. Please welcome from Lincoln High School, Amara James. The applause was generous, kind, but Amara didn ' t hear it. She walked out into the light as if through a dream. She sat, breathed, closed her eyes, and began. This new piece, whatever it was, didn ' t have structure at first. It just moved like water, like wind bending without breaking. It held the DNA of her past works, but without anger, without sorrow. There was something redemptive in it, something forward looking. It was filled with the colors of healing, moments of hesitation on purpose, pauses that spoke louder than noise, lifting phrases that reached upward, upward, then softened again like a hand releasing grief into grace. And when it ended, she didn ' t open her eyes right away. She let the stillness settle, let the audience live in the silence she ' d earned. Then, as if waking from a dream, she rose. The crowd was on its feet before she could bow. Some clapped wildly, some cried, some just stood with quiet awe, hands at their hearts. And through it all, Amara stood not as a symbol, but as a girl. A girl who had once been pulled off a stage and now commanded the finest one in the city. Not with defiance, not with fury, but with grace. Later in the green room, Miss Kim hugged her tightly. I ' ve never been prouder, she whispered. Even strangers lined up to speak to her. Fellow musicians, community leaders. One older man, with tears in his eyes, grasped her hand and said, you made me remember something I forgot mattered. Amara nodded, overwhelmed. And when the room finally cleared and she was left alone with her mother and Leela, she looked down at her sister and asked, did you hear everything? Leela nodded furiously. I felt it in my chest. Amara smiled, then knelt so their eyes met. Someday you ' ll play too. Leela whispered. Can I call mine unbroken? Amara pulled her into a hug. Yes, she said, voice trembling. Yes, you can. And somewhere inside her, a quiet knowing settled in. This wasn ' t the end. This was the overture, to everything still unwritten. The snow had melted into memory. Lincoln ' s streets shimmered with puddles that mirrored a sky slowly learning how to be blue again. Spring was coming, not just to the trees, but to people. Something in the town felt lighter, open, as if the whole place had exhaled. But for Amara, the days following the symposium carried a different kind of stillness. Not the kind that follows failure, but the kind that comes after a dream is realized. And life must go on. Her performance had made headlines. Local Girl Moves City with Original Piano Composition. It was shared on the state education board ' s website, replayed in assemblies across neighboring counties. One columnist even called it a symphony of grace birthed from silence. Yet in the quiet after, Amara didn ' t feel famous. She just felt, full. Not of noise, but of peace. Still, with visibility came consequence. One afternoon in early March, she was called unexpectedly to the front office. The woman at the reception desk looked nervous, gesturing toward the small meeting room adjacent to the lobby. Someone ' s here to see you, she said. Amara ' s heartbeat a little faster. Her mind raced. Had something happened? Was it about the board, or Juilliard? But when she stepped into the room, her breath caught. It was Principal Crawford. He sat in one of the chairs, back straight, his suit pressed to perfection. Yet something about him seemed smaller now. Not physically, spiritually. Like the scaffolding that once propped up his pride had been dismantled one beam at a time. He rose when she entered. Miss James, he said. His voice, once heavy with authority, now carried something foreign to her ears. Restraint. I asked to speak with you personally, he continued, and the board agreed. That just, five minutes, that ' s all I ask. Amara didn ' t speak. She sat slowly and waited. Crawford drew a breath. Not a proud one, a reluctant one. I want to start by saying I know there ' s nothing I can say that erases what I did. She looked at him, her gaze quiet but unwavering. He swallowed. I was wrong. I saw you as a disruption instead of an artist. I was afraid your performance would reflect poorly on the image I wanted for the school, and I let that fear turn into prejudice. The words hung there. Heavy. Late. I don ' t expect forgiveness, he added. But I, I thought it mattered that you heard it from me. Amara studied him for a long moment. She didn ' t hate him. That surprised her. But she didn ' t pity him either. She just saw a man. A man who had spent years building fences and had finally realized the world had passed him by on the other side. When she finally spoke, her voice was soft but firm. You took something from me that night, she said. And no apology can undo that, but your silence afterward hurt more. You knew what you ' d done and you let me carry it alone. His face fell slightly. He nodded. But, she continued, I didn ' t stop playing, and I never will. Not for you, not for anyone. A pause. Then she stood and extended her hand, not in reconciliation, but enclosure. He took it stunned, and in that moment, the great divide between them shrank to a quiet handshake in a room no one else would ever remember. When she left, the spring air felt brighter. Back in the music wing, Miss Kim was waiting. She must have known where Amara had been because she didn ' t ask. She just handed her a small envelope. This came for you. Amara opened it. Her breath hitched. Inside was a handwritten note on heavy parchment. The logo at the top was unmistakable, the National Composers Guild. We are honored to invite you to our summer fellowship program in Boston as one of the youngest composers in our history. She read it twice, then looked at Miss Kim, eyes wide with disbelief. I didn ' t even apply. They saw your Juilliard piece, Miss Kim said, beaming. Someone from the guild was in the audience. Amara sat down slowly at the piano bench, the letter resting gently in her lap. She felt like she was watching her life stretch out ahead of her, a winding road full of music and motion. And suddenly, it no longer felt so far away. Later that week, the school held a small ceremony to unveil the official announcement of the Amara Initiative. It wasn ' t lavish, just a gathering of students, teachers, and community leaders in the auditorium, where her journey had started with a silencing whisper. She was asked to speak. The mic trembled in her hands, but her voice didn ' t. When I was pulled off this stage, I thought my voice had been taken, she said. But silence is never the end of the story. Sometimes it ' s just the place where a song waits to begin. They stood for her when she finished, not in applause, but in acknowledgement. It was there, among the crowd, that she saw something she hadn ' t expected. In the far back row, her father. He hadn ' t been part of her story for years, not since the divorce. He lived in Chicago now, sporadic calls, late birthday cards. He ' d missed so much, but he was here. Tears shimmered in his eyes as he mouthed the words, I ' m proud of you. And somehow that mattered more than she thought it would. After the event, he waited outside by the playground. You came, she said, voice tight. I watched you play online, he said softly. Then I saw what you created, and I just needed to see it for myself. They talked for an hour, maybe more, about her music, about the fellowship, about how silence between people sometimes grows when no one dares to speak first. When he hugged her goodbye, it wasn ' t perfect. But it wasn ' t hollow either. And that night, for the first time in a long while, Amara sat at her window, looking out over the quiet town, and felt something settle inside her. Not fame, not triumph, but wholeness. It didn ' t erase what had happened, but it made room for everything that was still possible. And as the wind pressed softly against the glass and the stars blinked above like distant piano keys of light, Amara reached for her journal and began to write a new piece. Not because someone asked her to, but because there was still so much left to say. The seasons turned, quiet as breath. By April, the cherry blossoms bloomed outside Lincoln High, their petals soft and blushing against the blue sky like something fragile made brave. The air no longer held the ache of winter. It carried instead the perfume of beginnings. And all around her, Amara watched the community shift. It was in small things first. A group of third graders gathered outside the music room every Tuesday now, part of the school ' s new emerging talent hour, where older students mentored the younger ones. Amara had helped launch it as part of the Amara Initiative, though she insisted it not be about her. Let it be about them, she ' d said. Let them hear their own names. She visited often, quietly, sitting on the floor with kids who still wrote notes backwards and tapped rhythms with sticky fingers. They ' d ask her things like, do you know Beyonce? Or can you make a song for dogs? And she ' d just laugh and say, let ' s try. Their joy was unfiltered, wild, pure, and something in her healed a little more every time she sat among them. But beyond those classroom walls, other changes stirred, more complicated ones. A town hall meeting was called in mid April to discuss ongoing equity in the school district. It was supposed to be routine. It wasn ' t. Miss Kim invited Amara to attend, just to listen. She didn ' t plan on speaking, but once they arrived and the conversations began, silence didn ' t feel like an option. Parents filled the folding chairs, some came with notepads, some came with anger. One woman, flushed and frowning, stood and said, I don ' t think all this attention on one student is healthy. It sets a precedent. A man next to her nodded. Why not celebrate every kid? Miss Kim stood then, not angry but clear. No one is asking you to only celebrate Amara. What we ' re asking is that no child is dismissed again because they don ' t match a certain mold. A few people shifted uncomfortably. Then Amara rose. Not loud, not emotional, just certain. She looked out at the rows of grown ups who had so much to say, and so little interest in listening. I didn ' t want attention, she said quietly. I wanted fairness, and when that didn ' t come, I played anyway. That ' s not pride, that ' s survival. The room hushed. Then an older woman, someone Amara didn ' t recognize, stood and said, I ' m the grandmother of one of Amara ' s classmates. I watched her perform at the symposium, and I haven ' t stopped thinking about it since. Her music didn ' t ask for applause, it asked for honesty. Slowly, the tide shifted. By the end of the meeting, the school board agreed to invest in new training programs for staff. Anonymous reporting systems for student bias, monthly feedback forums for marginalized voices. It was policy, yes. But it was also poetry, spoken in the language of progress. After the meeting, as the room emptied, Amara lingered outside beneath the old lamplight near the sidewalk. The stars had emerged, shy and blinking. Miss Kim joined her quietly. You ' re not just playing piano anymore, she said. You ' re composing something bigger than music. Amara exhaled, her breath visible in the crisp night air. Sometimes I miss when it was just me and the keys. You ' ll always have that, Miss Kim replied. But now you also have an echo. In the days that followed, letters began arriving at the school in small white envelopes, most with childlike handwriting and crooked stamps. One came from a middle school in Alabama with a video link inside, three young girls performing unmuted on flute, violin, and piano. Another came from a boy in Maine. I showed your performance to my music teacher, and she cried. We ' re starting a club for kids like us who don ' t get picked. Amara kept every letter. She taped some to her bedroom wall. Others she placed in a box labeled echoes. Her mother walked in one evening while she was reading a new one. You ' ve done something extraordinary, she said softly. I don ' t know what to do with all of it, Amara confessed. Let it shape you, her mother replied. But don ' t let it consume you. You ' re still allowed to be a teenager. So that weekend, Amara went roller skating with friends. They laughed, held hands, fell repeatedly. No one mentioned music, or school boards, or courage. It was just fun, simple, needed. But then Monday came, and with it, a new storm. During third period, a teacher ' s voice called over the intercom. Amara James, please report to the main office. She felt the room go still. Not fearful, curious. When she arrived, the secretary handed her a manila envelope. Inside were five glossy photographs and a handwritten note. Dear Amara, I don ' t know if you remember me, but I never forgot you. Your courage gave me the strength to reclaim my voice. I finally left my job this week. My resignation is enclosed. Thank you for giving me a reason to believe change was possible. Always, Miss Rivera. Amira stared at the photos. One was a younger Miss Rivera, the former assistant principal, standing beside a piano, beaming. The next showed her as a music teacher in another state. Another showed her classroom, vibrant and full of instruments. And the last one, a hand painted sign above the doorway, let every child be heard. Amira pressed the photos to her chest, tears welling. She remembered Miss Rivera, always kind, always quiet. Never powerful enough to challenge Crawford, but never cruel either. A woman stuck between right and silence. Now free. And that ' s when it truly hit her. This story wasn ' t just hers anymore. It belonged to every student who ' d stayed quiet, every teacher who had bitten their tongue, every parent who once doubted but now understood. The music had become movement, and the keys she once touched alone now echoed in hands all over the country. That night, Amara sat at her window again. The wind moved gently through the trees like breath through a song. She opened her journal, the pages now filled with scribbled melodies, quotes, bits of conversations she never wanted to forget. And she wrote something new at the top of the next page. For those who once whispered and now roar. Then slowly she turned to the piano. She played a new chord. Something rising, something bright, something brave. The air smelled like lilacs. By mid April, the scent drifted in from the school courtyard like a song without lyrics, folding into every hallway, every classroom. Spring had finally committed, and Lincoln High bloomed with it. Not just in flowers, but in spirit. What had once felt like walls now felt like windows. But inside Amara, another kind of weather stirred. It wasn ' t doubt, not anymore. It was something harder to name. A quiet, aching question that nestled in her chest and wouldn ' t leave her alone. What now? The fellowship in Boston loomed on the horizon like a ship at sea, brilliant, distant, full of promise. She was scheduled to fly out in June, and Juilliard had already sent her reading material and preliminary composition prompts. Her calendar filled quickly with rehearsals, interviews, and mentorship meetings. Everyone wanted something from her. And yet, the piano, her first love, her first voice, began to feel farther and farther away. Sometimes she ' d sit down to play and feel nothing. The keys, once alive, now cold beneath her fingertips. The melodies didn ' t come easily anymore. They stuttered, or worse, they didn ' t come at all. At first she hid it, smiled when people asked if she was still composing, gave polite answers, pretended her silence was focus, but the truth felt heavier every day. It wasn ' t just burnout, it was grief. Grief for the quiet days, for the anonymity, for the girl who used to play in corners without applause and felt complete simply because she had music. One evening after dinner, she lingered at the piano but didn ' t play. Her mother sat nearby, folding towels in slow, meditative motions. You ' ve barely touched it in days, her mother said gently. Amara didn ' t answer, her mother didn ' t push. But then she added, almost like a whisper, you don ' t owe anyone music. Amara looked up. You don ' t have to prove anything anymore, baby, her mother said, setting the towel down. They took your voice once. Don ' t let the weight of their praise steal it again. Those words hung in the air like a benediction. That night, Amara opened her journal and wrote a single line across the page. I am not their story, I am my own. She closed the book and slept soundly for the first time in weeks. In the days that followed, she returned to the piano, but not to write, not to perform, just to listen. She ' d press a single note and let it linger. Then another. She played lullabies for Lila. She made up silly songs for the dog. And then slowly, something shifted. One afternoon, she visited the music room after school, alone. The light through the stained glass windows painted the floor in ribbons of amber and rose. She sat at the baby grand, rested her hands on the keys, and didn ' t think. She just played. It began with a lull, like water lapping at the shore, then a fragile thread of melody, tiptoeing across her memory. It wasn ' t a piece, it was a prayer, of restoration, of reclamation. Each note said what words couldn ' t, that she missed the version of herself who played not to be heard but to feel. That being strong didn ' t mean being perfect. That her silence wasn ' t weakness, it was rest. And when the last note faded, she smiled, not big, but real. She hadn ' t written anything new, but she ' d found her way home. A few days later, Miss Kim approached her after class, holding a A few days later, Miss Kim approached her after class, holding a sealed envelope with gold foil lettering. What ' s this, Amara asked. Miss Kim ' s eyes sparkled. Open it. Inside was a formal invitation. You are cordially invited to perform at the Lincoln County Centennial Gala as the featured youth composer and guest of honor. Amara stared at the text. This is the most important community event in twenty five years, Miss Kim said. And they want you to close it. Amara hesitated. I don ' t know if I have anything left to say. You don ' t need to say anything, Miss Kim replied. You just need to feel something, and the music will come. Still, she gave Amara the choice. No pressure, no expectation, just a door gently opened. That night, Amara sat by the window, watching the trees sway. Lila tiptoed in, wrapped in a blanket, and sat beside her. Why do people want you to play so much, she asked innocently. Amara thought for a long moment. Because I played something once that made them remember what it feels like to be human. Are you going to do it again? Amara smiled. I don ' t know, maybe. But this time, I want it to be because it ' s true, not because they ' re listening, but because I am. Two nights later, she sat at the piano again, and she began to write, not the way she used to, obsessing over tempo or progression. This time, she let the piece unfold slowly, like petals after rain. She didn ' t rush it. Some days she added only a single line. Some days she erased more than she kept. She named it Still I Play. The notes carried sorrow but also strength. It was less about defiance now and more about grace, about choosing to speak, even when you ' ve earned the right to stay silent, about learning how to love your voice again after the world has tried to script it for you. The night of the gala arrived warm and silverlit. The auditorium was transformed with white linens, chandeliers, and floral arrangements that shimmered under the soft stage lights. It wasn ' t a school stage now, it was a city ' s tribute, a stage made for celebration. Amara sat backstage wearing a soft gray dress and a necklace her mother had once worn to her own high school prom. She watched the audience file in, people from all walks of life, teachers, students, board members, neighbors, the mayor, even former Principal Crawford. He stood near the back, solemn but present, not as a symbol, just as a man. When her name was announced, Amara stood tall and stepped into the light. No part of her trembled now. She sat, closed her eyes, and played Still I Play. The melody rose like memory. The first passage was soft, a nod to beginnings. Then came the heartbeat, stronger, slower, deliberate, a pause, a breath, then crescendo. It wasn ' t about proving anything, it was about presence. The final note rang out like a promise, and the room erupted into applause, not the kind that demands but the kind that thanks. When Amara stood and bowed, she saw her mother with tears in her eyes, Leela with hands clasped at her heart, and Miss Kim, whispering something to no one but the wind. She found her music again. The morning after the gala arrived slow and golden, sunlight pouring through the sheer curtains of Amara ' s bedroom like soft applause that hadn ' t yet faded. Outside, the town stirred gently, church bells in the distance, a lawnmower humming two blocks down, birds flitting between budding branches like notes on a treble staff. But inside, Amara sat cross legged on her bed, holding her phone like it had turned to stone. The video of her gala performance posted by someone in the audience had reached a million views overnight. She refreshed the page, one point two million. Her inbox was overflowing, interview requests, feature articles, invitations to speak at conferences, youth summits, podcasts. There was one message from a major music foundation offering to sponsor a short, short film based on her story. Another from a senator ' s office, yes, a senator, wanting to nominate her for a national youth arts award. It felt unreal. Her mother peeked in, holding a plate with toast and strawberries. You ' ve gone viral again, she said with a soft smile. Is it okay if I still make you breakfast? Amara laughed quietly, setting the phone down. Please do. They sat together on the edge of the bed, the silence warm and gentle. I guess people really heard it, Amara said. Her mother looked at her carefully. They heard it because you meant it. But as the day unfolded, the momentum didn ' t slow. Her phone vibrated constantly. Every buzz felt like a pull, and with each one, Amara felt her piece thinning, stretched like a page someone kept writing on without asking if the paper could take more ink. By sunset, she was exhausted, not physically, spiritually. She sat at the piano but didn ' t touch the keys. Miss Kim called that evening. Amara didn ' t pick up. She texted instead, just need quiet. We ' ll reach out tomorrow. Thank you for always believing in me. That night she dreamt of waves, not crashing ones, still ones, endless, glassy, quiet. She woke with tears on her cheeks and didn ' t know why. The next morning, Amara stepped outside barefoot. The lawn was still cool with dew. She looked up at the sky, arms crossed, breathing deeply. Then she walked back inside, found her journal, and wrote one sentence. Fame is a mirror, but music is a window. The following week, she declined most interviews. She chose to write thank you letters instead, to teachers, to cafeteria staff, to her childhood piano instructor who taught her to listen with her whole body, to the old janitor who once helped carry the music stand she dropped and said, don ' t let anybody tell you this ain ' t yours. Then she visited Miss Kim, unannounced, carrying a small potted orchid and a folded envelope. Miss Kim opened the door with eyes that instantly softened. I just wanted to say thank you, properly, Amara said. They sat in Miss Kim ' s backyard garden, surrounded by tulips and rosemary, the air fragrant and light. I didn ' t expect all this, Amara said after a while. I didn ' t expect to feel so far away from myself after something so good. Miss Kim nodded, sipping tea. That ' s the secret no one tells you about success. It ' s not always elevation. Sometimes it ' s dislocation. You become someone others recognize before you have time to understand who you ' re becoming. Amara blinked back unexpected tears. I miss the version of me who didn ' t know what people expected. Miss Kim reached over and took her hand. Then stay with the music. That part never lies. They sat in silence, two generations of artists bonded not by notes but by truth. That weekend, Amara traveled with her mother and Lila to the coast, a quiet place with no Wi Fi and an old wooden deck that creaked beneath their steps. It was the first time she ' d been that disconnected in months, and it was beautiful. She read books, drew sketches of birds, collected shells with Lila. At night, she played a portable keyboard by candlelight, not to perform, not to perfect, just to feel. And when she played, she cried, but they were clean tears, healing ones. One afternoon, Lila curled beside her on the dock. Can you teach me that song you played the night you ' d the whole room cry? Amara chuckled. You mean Still I Play? Lila nodded. I think it ' s my favorite. So Amara taught her, slowly, patiently until her sister ' s small fingers stumbled into the right notes. It wasn ' t flawless, it wasn ' t fast, but it was magic. And as Lila played, Amara watched the waves again, still, reflective, endless. She realized something in that moment. Her story didn ' t belong to a single performance, a single speech, or a single injustice. It lived in every key she pressed, in every girl who dared to speak, in every silence that finally gave way to song. The day they returned to Lincoln, a letter awaited her on the kitchen table, thick paper, hand addressed, from the White House. Her heart stilled. Inside was a formal invitation. She had been chosen as one of ten youth cultural ambassadors to perform at a national event celebrating resilience in the arts. She set the letter down, hands trembling. Her mother watched her closely. Are you okay? Amara nodded, then whispered, I don ' t know what to do. Her mother came over, knelt beside her, and took her face in her hands. Do what you ' ve always done. Tell the truth, through your music. That ' s all you ever had to do. That night, Amara played again. She played not for the president, not for an award, not even for the millions who now knew her name. She played for the little girl she used to be, the one who sat backstage in a wrinkled white dress, who was told to leave the stage because her melody didn ' t match someone else ' s expectations. She played for her, for the girl who still lived inside her, quiet, brave, and completely unshakable. The day arrived wrapped in the kind of soft spring air that made everything seem possible. Washington D C hummed beneath a pale sky, the city alive with motion, cars gliding over wet pavement, flags fluttering at half mast in respectful grace, and crowds slowly forming at the foot of the National Mall. Amid the marble and monuments, a temporary stage had been built, modest but dignified, surrounded by folding white chairs and the kind of hush that waits patiently before history is made. Amara stood at the edge of it, fingers tucked into the pockets of her light gray coat, the Lincoln Memorial rising like a giant guardian behind her. She glanced toward the piano sitting beneath a simple awning, a polished black Steinway gleaming under the soft glare of the early afternoon sun. She wasn ' t nervous, not like before. She was quiet, yes, but it wasn ' t the quiet of fear, it was reverence. Her mother stood nearby, her eyes misted with emotion, her hands folded tightly beneath her shawl. Lila was already seated in the second row, bouncing her legs, wide eyed and proud. Miss Kim, flown in specially for the event, smiled from behind her sunglasses, mouthing the words, you ' ve got this. And then from behind the velvet divider, a voice called gently, Miss Amara James, we ' re ready for you. As she walked onto the stage, the audience, composed of artists, youth leaders, educators, and national officials, stood in respectful silence. At the far edge of the crowd, a tall man in a tailored navy suit lowered his sunglasses and clapped softly. She recognized him instantly, the president. She bowed slightly, then sat. The wind curled gently around her ankles. The microphone caught the sound of it. Her dress moved like water. Her heartbeat, steady now, sounded like a metronome of her own making. She breathed in, closed her eyes, and pressed the first key. Her composition was called Unbroken. It was not dramatic, it was not defiant, it was deliberate. The opening notes were clean and soft, almost like an apology whispered in reverse. Then came the echo of longing, chords that swelled and retreated, reminiscent of doorways closed too early and windows opened too late. But gradually, note by note, resilience unfolded, a child humming in a dark hallway. A teacher standing her ground in a conference room, a mother working late and whispering, you are enough, and a girl, once silenced, now shaping air into meaning, every keystroke a declaration, you cannot define me. The crescendo rose like a tide, not to crash but to lift. The final passage carried the weight of a thousand moments, the humiliation backstage, the first viral video, the call from Juilliard, the apology in a quiet office, the letter from the White House. She played them all. And then silence. She didn ' t look up right away. She let the moment settle. And when she finally raised her head, the crowd was on its feet. Not a cheer, not a roar, but a sustained, standing silence, like the kind reserved for cathedrals, and grief, and grace. Tears streamed openly. Some had hands pressed to their hearts, others simply nodded, lips trembling. Lila clapped with her entire body, bouncing in her seat, shouting, that ' s my sister, over the hush. The president approached the stage. He didn ' t shake her hand. He hugged her, whispered something she would never repeat. Later in the reception room, reporters asked her a dozen variations of the same question. What was this moment like? She paused, then said simply, it felt like turning a wound into wind. She flew home that night with her mother asleep on her shoulder and Lila clutching a souvenir mug that said history begins with one voice. At home, the house was quiet, her bedroom unchanged, her piano untouched for days. She sat down again, this time there was no performance, no spotlight, just her. She played not a masterpiece but a memory, a piece she once called unmuted, now rewritten as remembered. And in that room, with the moon watching through the window, Amara smiled, because she had become what she once needed, a girl who stayed, a girl who played, a girl who was never afraid to begin again. To anyone who ' s ever been silenced, overlooked, or told that they didn ' t belong, Amara ' s story is for you. Her journey wasn ' t about perfection or applause. It was about reclaiming the voice that others tried to take. She teaches us that dignity doesn ' t come from a spotlight. It comes from standing tall when no one ' s clapping, and still choosing to play. There will always be people who try to pull you off your stage, people who can ' t see past your skin, your story, or their own bias. But what matters is not their verdict, it ' s your refusal to vanish. Amara ' s resilience reminds us that grace can be louder than anger, and that music, like truth, will always find a way to be heard. Your voice matters, your gift matters. And even if the world isn ' t ready to listen, don ' t ever stop playing. Because sometimes the most powerful revolutions begin with a single note.